Today's a little bit different. We're gonna, we've called the order of the common council. We have some business amendments and approval claims that have to be hap- have to happen. At that point, after that, we'll call the order of the Board of Public Works and Safety, representing the Board of Public Works and Safety, and I will be Kerry Blessinger, Dan Fitch, and myself. And then we'll also bring forth the Utility Rate Advisory Board, which we made up of Sandra Bowman, Mr. Young here, Mr. Painter, and Mr. Blessinger again. So he'll be serving on both the boards as we go through. We also have Dustin Schmidt, who's for the Public Works and Safety. So we do have a forum for all the, for both of those boards. All right, do we, first, first question is, do we have approval of the minutes? Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Making motions through the minutes.
I'll second it.
First, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims. We have a motion to approve claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll now call to order the Board of Public Works and Safety. It's gonna be represented again by myself, and Mr. Blessinger, Mr. Fitch, and Mr. Schmidt as part of the Board of Public Works and Safety. And now I'll call to order the Utility Rate Advisory Board. And the first, first thing that we need to do with the, the four is elect a chairperson for the Utility Rate Advisory Board. Do we have nominations? Sandra?
I'll second that.
Okay. Sandra Bowman has, we have a first and a second for Sandra, because Sandra's quiet tonight, so they're, but we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So thank you, Sandra, for serving gallantly.
You're welcome.
As a board chair. We're gonna start off, I think, for any decisions we have to make, there's two issues that we need to address first. One of those being kind of the history of this project. We have Eric Parsley here from Commonwealth Engineers that will have a slide presentation that he'll go through. The second version of that is we have Buzz Cron here from Cron, O.W., Cron and Associates, and he'll, he'll be really talking about the financial piece. We have given you copies of that, of Buzz's information, as well as anything, any financial information. I think you got it a week ago or something, prior to this, once everything is finalized. But I think, obviously, what's here tonight, the project is much more expensive than what would have been thought of a year ago, or maybe even six months ago. And we, that's where the explanations need to come in. And not only will they give a presentation, but they're free at any time. We do have all the boards here that, that are free to ask questions of Eric. So if we can start with Eric?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you very much.
How you're involved and those.
Yep, yep. I'm Eric Parsley with Commonwealth Engineers. I'm the project manager over this project, been involved with the city for a number of years, as has our firm on the wastewater side of things. We'll kind of go through a little bit of that, I think, as the mayor indicated. It's probably prudent at this point to talk a little bit about the why we have to do the project and some of the background there. And then I'll, I'll go through some of the cost trends that we've been seeing over the last few years on projects. As you know, we had a, a low number of bidders on this, kind of addressed that issue a little bit as well. Basically, I'll kind of keep this brief, but go ahead and shoot questions at me as we go, if, if something pops up. But there's just a few big key areas as, as to why we need to do a project here. The plant itself, number one, is really just the age. The core facilities that actually process most of the wastewater, last upgrade on those was really almost thirty years ago now. Some of the, some of the units that are in service out there date back to nineteen fifty-seven. So, number one, we identified that we have an, an age issue. You know, usually wastewater treatment plants, we say twenty to thirty years before you start seeing some real major needs for improvements and, and replacements at the plant. Done a good job of maintaining what's out there, but it's, it's simply, it's a hard life at a wastewater treatment plant, and you just have, you just have equipment that just doesn't, doesn't survive beyond that point. Second thing we noticed when we went through the data of, of the plant was really a capacity concern. We look back, this was data from sixteen to nineteen. We originally did the, the study of the plant around that two thousand and nineteen timeframe. We look at kind of a thirty-day running average when we look at data. It's just a good number to see what, how, how the plant usually acclimates to flows as opposed to instantaneous peaks and whatnot. But when we look at that, we see the average flows in that thirty-day rolling average is about a hundred and twenty-seven percent of the design. So, the design of that plant was a little over one million gallons a day. We were seeing average months around one point four when we looked at that thirty, at that thirty-day average. So, that is, that is a point of concern. And then kind of across the board, some of these other parameters, you see, measure the organic load, the suspended solids load, some of the other kind of pollutant loadings that we look at. We were also above on those averages as well. A bigger concern we have at this plant, though, is really with your peak flows. One of the things that, let's see, that's going backwards. That graph kind of shows some things. The, the plant's a little bit, a little bit unique in how it operates, especially with, within the regulations and guidelines of the state of Indiana. Huntingburg has what's considered a separate sanitary sewer system, which means it's only supposed to carry and collect sanitary waste. Well, we still see high flows whenever it does rain. That's not unusual, but the, the big differentiation is it's not a combined sewer system. In other words, it wasn't originally designed to carry storm water and sanitary wastewater. It was designed with the intent of only carrying sanitary wastewater. That puts you into a whole different realm of regulations and things that you can do when, when we start looking at IDIM regulations and things that apply to the plant. We, the plant was designed, if you kind of see the green stuff on the screen, normally flow goes through that pattern, and that's full treatment. It, the, the wastewater's, it's screened, it's clarified, it's then biologically treated, then it's clarified again, disinfected, and discharged. And those processes together provide full treatment of the wastewater before it discharges. When it rains, that flow increases so much that it overflows that normal course of events out at the plant. And so these kind of orange-looking rectangles on here are overflow lagoons, and they basically store that excess wastewater. The intent is, then it gets re, repurposed back through the plant, fully treated and discharged. But unfortunately, we can't do that all the time. We just get flows that are in excess of what the capabilities are. And so the way the plant operates now is when these fill up, if we can't run it back through the plant, it's disinfected and, and mixed in with the fully-treated wastewater and discharged. That's unique in the state of Indiana. That's generally not allowed. We, the city, and when I say we, was successful, I think it was ninety-two, in obtaining an interlocutory agreement that basically allowed for this to happen. That was, I believe, in the, in the shape of a, of an agreed order that expired a few years ago, and allowed for this design to be done through the permitting branch of IDIM. I can tell you, they don't like it. We've had pressures over the years to do away with that interlocutory agreement and to have full treatment out at the plant for every drop of, of, of flow that comes through there. It's, it's a vulnerable position, I guess is probably the best way to put it. And as years have gone by, and different people have changed at IDIM over the years that weren't involved with that original decision, it's come, it's become more and more of an issue up there. And that really came to a head kind of in two thousand and seventeen, that led into the, the study that we did in two thousand and nineteen. Let's see, if we go forward. It's really gotten worse in the last, what, three months or so, I guess? And that, I mentioned the permitting division that permitted this at the plant, but you've also got a compliance division at IDIM that reviews all of the reports that the wastewater treatment plant people send in, and all the data that comes in. They really don't understand how this wet weather stream works out there. They're wanting Brad to go back and redo reports over the last three years that would basically state that any time that that is in service, that you are bypassing and you are overflowing untreated, non-completely-treated wastewater. That will put you on a hit list, basically, with IDIM. Because you're essentially stating that every time that that, that that happens, we have bypass of full treatment. Certainly not something we want. It certainly impacts your ability to grow and accept additional flow at the plant. It can put you into the category of not being able to accept additional growth within the system, which is not something we want, obviously. So, that's really the bigger, the, the biggest driver, I think, is regulatory as to the need for doing something with the plant. So, the new plant design is, it, it's gonna fit within the footprint of the area that we have within the flood wall protected berm that's out there at the plant. It is about a little over three times larger in capacity than what your current facility is. It will be able to handle the peak flows that have been recorded coming into the facility as well. So we won't have any more of this wet weather bypass of treatment whenever, whenever the new, the new plant comes on, comes onboard. The other thing I wanted to touch on is there have been changes since the two thousand and nineteen study was done, and we've gone through the design process over the last few years that have impacted the design as well. One of the bigger issues that we ran into is some poor soils out on the site. Once we had the geotechnical reports back in, it was estimating anywhere from four to five inches of settlement if we were to build those tanks. Obviously, we can't have tanks settling four to five inches. They would be cracking, and we would be leaking. So, we've got a pretty profound subsurface support system that's gonna have to be done as part of this process, or this project, as well additional, as additional reinforcement necessary in the tanks. The other thing that was determined was the historical loadings to the plant were significantly higher over the course of the last few years. There were some different sampling techniques that were started late two thousand and nineteen. What these graphs show here, this is just flow to the plant. This is two thousand and sixteen going all the way to twenty twenty-two. No real change over that time period. In fact, we went back further than sixteen and really didn't see any changes. But, these are those loadings I was talking about, the pollutants earlier. You can see where they were pretty low here. Well, then they jumped up after this point, and what happened is there was a difference in the mechanism in which sampling was conducted to get a better representation of what was coming into that plant over twenty-four hours. Before this time, they were taking basically grab samples every so often, and at this time, they started putting in meters that actually took composite samples more frequently throughout the day and got a better picture of exactly what was going on the plant. The problem is, this all came to light after we'd already done the first design of the plant, and we're ready to go to IDIM. So, we had to go, we went back and essentially redesigned the plant, but we wanted to keep it within that same footprint. And we went from essentially twenty-foot-high walls to thirty-foot-high walls for the tankage out there. It increased the capac, we had to increase the capacity of the plant to handle these loadings, not the flows, but these loadings, by about fifty percent. So, pretty sizable, pretty sizable change there. And when you go from twenty foot to thirty foot, as you can imagine, the concrete gets substantially more. It's not just higher, it's a lot thicker as well. So, going back into the bidding, as you know, we opened bids for the project about, you know, a few weeks ago and whatnot. There's an off-site component to this, too, and kind of focusing more on the wastewater treatment plant components here. We are seeing just an overload of projects in Indiana, really, it, it extends beyond that. But, you know, when we opened bids, there was one bidder that you guys had. These are ten that we contacted through the course of the bidding that would normally be people that we would see involved in projects of this size that declined to turn in a bid on the job. And I mean, I can touch just on a couple of them. Bowen Construction, number one there. I know they've got a couple large projects in Owensboro and in Evansville right now that have them, that have them tied up. Dugan and Myers is a company out of Ohio that actually purchased plans, but they had a large treatment plant that they were also bidding in their, in their backyard in Ohio and chose not to, not to go forward. Kokosi, number five, is involved with this two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar water plant in Evansville. You've probably heard about that in the news, that had been four-hundred million, and then they cut it back to two-fifty, but they're tied up with things as well. And the others, just across the board, you know, we reached out and spoke to, to every one of these numerous times trying to entice them to bid. Just across the board, we're busy and had backlogs of work for the next three years, basically, is, is what we were finding. It's not uncommon, I guess, in this day and age. I kind of took a, a poll of our projects that Commonwealth has done over the course of the last eighteen months or so. We've had at least a dozen projects where there were two or less bidders on those projects. Nine or ten of those, there was one bid. It just is the environment we're dealing with now. We've had to rebid multiple projects because there were zero bids at bid opening. And, and it's, it's timing, it's workforce development, it's, it's just an influx of projects that are out there. And that does obviously then impact our cost. So, the other thing we kind of look at, and I thought this was beneficial for you, for you all to see today as well, this is, there, there's a couple different resources that we look at for construction cost information. This particular one looks at about eight different large cities across the United States and provides some pretty good trending data that you can see. But what we're looking at here, basically, starting in two thousand and eight, is a, a summary of the construction costs that they've seen on projects each year. And you can see a steady incline up to roughly, here's two thousand and nineteen, right here, which is really when we started this project. And then a dramatic jump from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Now, in the, the last few quarters of twenty-three, we're starting to see that level off again, but we're not gonna see it ever go down. You know, once they go up, that's where they're gonna be. And there's a few things with the funding agencies actually coming out, becoming effective in June of this year, that we're anticipating another kind of jump up in municipal pricing as well. So, I don't know if this is a misery loves company type situation, but we're seeing these same increases kind of across the board for everybody that's doing projects of this scale, you know, this type at this time. Kind of to that point, we also graph, just internally within Commonwealth, the projects that we're bidding. We graph the wastewater treatment plant projects, their cost versus the amount of flow, and that's what this graph is kind of showing us here. So, basically, capacity across the bottom on the x-axis, and then the unit cost per gallon on the y-axis on the side. You can see the dots here for, those are some of our projects that we have that make up the data on this graph. And this one with the green circle is Huntingburg. It is dead on with the line when we do that analysis of where it would be with today's dollars in this environment that it's at. Actually, I was a little bit surprised with some of the complexities that we ran into. I thought it might come in possibly a little bit above this graph, that it hits right where it does. It, it, it kind of shows us that this is just where, where the bid environment is right now with the project. So, that's really all I had to present, just basically some background and some information as to where we're at with things. I know Buzz is gonna talk about the finance side of things, but before I turn it over to him, do you guys have any questions, additional questions for me?
Yes, I've got several. You, you mentioned that the last data was two thousand and nineteen. Do you have any current data for the average flow, what it is today?
Yes, yeah, yeah, actually, the, the average...
Is it ever down?
Yeah, it's, the flow itself is actually staying about the same. So this data is the flow. The black line was two thousand and nineteen, and so this carries us on up to twenty twenty-two. But we've looked at twenty-three data, and the flow itself is, has been consistent.
Standing about the same. Can you attribute any of that to water and people serving, low-flow pictures and things like that, and not getting enough fresh water in, which we really don't want to do, but to get the parts per billion, parts per billion could be feet per gallon?
Yeah.
I mean, is that...
We, we don't see, we don't see a lot of trending of reduction in flows over time. And I think it gets, I think the, the benefits that we have with some of those types of devices and things that you see, can it get offset by the wet weather flows that kind of speedles up high?
And that wet weather, I mean, see, Huntingburg's dealt with that for...
Yeah.
As a little kid, I remember, and we've gotten better. Have you taken into account, and that might be a question for him, future issues? I know PFAS is big. I don't know if the city's tested for PFAS, and, and, you know, that's probably two or three million if you, you find it, if not more.
Right.
And then getting rid of the filter. Have you, have you tested, checked for that, or kind of planning ahead? Because it kind of seems, you know, maybe fail to plan, plan to fail, and, you know, putting things in place as these regulations come.
Yeah, yeah. PFAS is not something that's obviously incorporated into the design here. I, we, we don't know if there's gonna be a PFAS issue or PFAS issue here. We do have phosphorus removal, which is a nutrient removal. The plant currently does that, and we are gonna have to do that moving forward as well. The, the PFAS issue is a huge challenge and extremely expensive to address. So, you know, we've kind of got our eye on, on that in the future, but we're not seeing a lot of activity with that yet as far as implementing that, just because the, with it not being a requirement yet, nobody's wanting to absorb that cost, so.
Come, come quick. What, what percentage of the update is, is related to new regulations rather than maybe beautification and a, and a concrete road rather than a, a...
Yeah.
Regular paved road and that?
Yeah.
I mean, what percentage?
We're, we are, it's a very bare-bones plant. You know, one of the things that we looked at, you know, constantly through this was, are there some things that we could cut or trim to kind of reduce the costs of, of the project? Really, all the core things that we need are built into it right now. Now, I will say, we've already started discussions with the contractor to look to see if there's any value engineering work that we can do to try to bring some of the, kind of control some of the cost during construction and whatnot. But those items usually will end up in just helping your contingency budget allow, allowance during construction to kind of address any potential change orders that we may have.
So, so, do you have an idea of what percentage this is related to regulations, or are you not, not in regulation, or...
I would, I would probably argue most of it's regulatory driven. You know, most of it's regulatory. We do have some, there is obviously some growth built in here based on this door, you know, growth patterns and whatnot that, that we've seen, and some allowance for, you know, economic development administration is, is one of your funding partners in here, and that was for growth and to maintain your current economic status with some of your industry and whatnot. So, don't have a good percentage breakdown for you, but...
Yeah, we look at division, we did say, and I will say, from Division B standpoint, and some of the street construction, because there will be some street construction on First Street. We are working together with all of our utilities and street departments, we've had those discussions, to keep those costs down, to be able to bring that street back so that we don't have to redo it two years now, three years now. We have a finished street, a smooth street at the end, but what's the best way to go about that? And the most inexpensive way is still to get, get the same quality. That's really what value engineering is, is to have a good, good surface from a street standpoint, but at the lowest cost possible. We're looking at fut, we've looked at future, do we need to replace laterals along the way? What, what else underneath there, what that is open, can we replace out to, to save us money down the road? Been a lot of discussion...
Yeah.
Across the board, and I continually, we continually, continually talk about value engineering and how we get the same product for, for lower, and that's what I like about Commonwealth, they think that way. And they've been very considerate of the city and the process that I've been involved in. I've asked same, some of the same questions.
Have we, has the city of Huntingburg had any fines, or any, any downstream issues where the water is going out that, that have complaints?
Have, have not. Brad could probably speak to that a little bit more as well. But, you know, we, we, we have, have done a good job of not violating any of the permit limits or anything of that nature.
So, any, any chance of, of funding through the IRA? Biggest entitled, but program ever, money.
Right.
Be able to get some of it, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, from the funding standpoint, and Buzz can speak to this a little bit more probably than I, I mean, we've, you've got three agencies, funding agencies involved here. We've got a, a large amount of grant coming from really all of them to help with the project, so.
Yeah, the, the biggest, from, from my standpoint as mayor and fiscal, fiscally looking at it, the longer we wait to apply for those funds, normally the, the price of construction is surpassing the amount of funds you could receive at the end. We have eight-point-three million dollars right now in grant funding. If we are not under contract by, by June nineteenth...
Yes.
We'll lose that. So we'll have to get that back, as well as we could be losing a one-point-one percent, one-point-one-two-five, I believe it is, percent on the rural development loan that, that could, we could slip out of our grasp pretty soon if we, the longer we go. And nobody can get that kind of money today. That was secured three years ago, is that, almost four?
Yeah.
A little over three, I believe. And Brad, getting at a time limit on some of those.
Thank you.
Hate to say that we're cheap in, in this project, but cheap money, so to speak, from an interest rate standpoint. We have been very fortunate, over and above most communities with, from the grants and that funding, and I, I think Buzz can speak a little more to that. The risk that we have, the longer we...
What was the, what was expected of, from the city and the interlocutory agreement with IDIM?
So...
Gosh, it goes back a long time. We had to, it's beginning in nineteen ninety-two, we had agreed to budget, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars a year to address inflow and infiltration. And as you know, an interlocutory order, interlocutory means temporary, and that temporary order went on for almost twenty years. And at one point, IDIM just said, "That's enough, you're gonna have to do something." And that's when the two thousand and two...
Yeah.
Project of the huge basin you saw, that's when IDIM said, "Well, maybe we'll accept that temporarily." And so we, we had constructed that huge basin that would capture the inflow, the excess rain event inflow, and hold it for later treatment. But we're not even able to treat that. And so it's being discharged after being sanitized chemically...
Yeah.
But not fully treated. And that's just not gonna, that's not gonna last long with IDIM, with the regulatory order. They're gonna put us on a sewer ban, sewer connection ban at some point. They've been patient with us, and we've, in fact, we've been lucky, almost since twenty ninety-two. But we need to step it up and do what's expected of every community. And we're not the only community in this, in this boat. There are plenty of communities around us that are gonna have to address these same issues. We've just come to the point where we've, we've realized we've gotta face it, we've had to do it.
I have yet to speak to a community that's not gonna have to address it in the next few years in, in this area. So, the, the hundred thousand a year or month, so for ten years or whatever it was, has that already been used, or is that still there to be ignored?
I don't, we're, we're probably doing fifty thousand a year now.
Yeah, correct. Just seventy-five.
But there was a, a set amount that we had to commit to every year. I'm not sure it was a hundred thousand, maybe it was only fifty thousand.
Is that mostly to take care of infiltration?
Aye, aye, yes.
Really?
Basically doing sewer laterals.
On it, there's a paper in this packet, total gallons treated and sold. And just by glancing at it real quick and going over it, is it safe to say that we are treating sixty percent of our treatment is from infiltration?
Yes.
That's high.
That's probably across the board. Yeah, I can speak to that, too. So, it, it, it's, it's a shame, almost, you know, I mentioned the sanitary, separate sanitary sewer communities versus the combined sewer communities. It's, it's, it's really almost harder for the... It's, it's, it's really almost harder for the separate sanitary sewer communities than the combined sewer communities. Because the goal for separate sanitary sewer communities is zero overflows. It's, we're going to treat every drop that comes through. Um, the combined sewer communities, they have some different provisions that allow them to actually overflow after certain rain events. Um, you simply don't qualify for that. Um, so, I mean, we have done a, a, a lot of inflow and infiltration work. You know, INI reduction type projects, um, not just in Huntingburg and not just the work that, that, that your department's done over the last twenty years. But even in other communities, we've gone as far as replacing ninety percent of the pipes in the, under the ground only to find that you don't drop that number down of significance. Um, you know, we've had some small communities that have incurred a lot of millions of dollars of debt. It's very, very difficult for them, um, only to find that we're barely inching that number down. Uh, w- w- we say, if you get a fifteen percent reduction, you've done a good job. And fifteen percent doesn't do anything for us, y- you know, here. So, y- you know, we, I, we advise communities not to ignore the INI efforts. You certainly need to continue to do those, but view those from a maintenance perspective more than from a perspective that we're going to get that load, that number down, which ends up being, we just have to come up with a way to transport and treat it, uh, at the plants. So, and that's not unique to Huntingburg, um, we're seeing that in a lot of other communities as well.
I mean, like, say sixty percent is a high number, so, so what else? If we would get rid of that, what, what else is?
Yeah, and that's the.
Causing the issue. I know, I know in the old days, the, when they first brought out the plastic pipes, it just bucked them together. Cause there's a lot of houses in the seventies, which pipes were just bucked together and not sealed and no, those are like.
Yeah, and you guys are really doing a good job of televising your lines, cleaning your lines, addressing where you would have those or you would have pipes that are separated, that you'd see active leaks in, lining those, replacing those lines. You've got, you, you've got probably one of the best policies as far as the laterals that go from the main that the city controls to the homes. And that you have to have those inspected and have to have those properly repaired. That's where we see an area that gets neglected with a lot of communities. Um, you get a lot of pushback from your, from, from your residents on it, but, uh, we see a lot of flow coming in from, from those as well. So, you know, the fact that you've instituted those things and over the last few years, and we're still seeing those numbers, it just kind of furthers to that, there's really not a lot, there's, there's not a lot we can look at to try to gain and, and knock that sixty percent number down.
Those laterals are a requirement in any real estate transaction that occurs in the city. So, transfer of ownership, that has to occur on the laterals. Uh, we do have a good, um, we do have a good inspection program and they do what they, we can through that. We look at areas where maybe paving or, uh, we'll be working on some, what, Eighth Street next and, uh, some other areas up in the north side where there's some, a lot of INI. Uh, but it is, it would be staggering to, to be able to come up with a number that would take, to, to reduce that by twenty or thirty percent. Would, would it be more than this plant?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and, and you would still not have a plant capable of handling.
That's, that's problem with I N I. Water goes where it wants to, so sometimes you can control it as best you can and do your maintenance.
So, what's our potential growth with this new plant? I mean.
Well, let me go back, see if I've got that number.
Three and a half?
Yeah, so we're going from, uh, current plant's one point one and we're going up to three and a half MGD. Um, you know, we've got allocated what, what seems on paper as a rela- relatively small, I guess you'd say, number for residential growth. We've got a pretty sizable amount for industrial commercial growth at, at sixty percent. But, um, you've got to kind of bear in mind the way we come up with the average flow for design purposes as we look at the peak month, and we know it's talking about those thirty day rolling averages. So, we build into the capacity there as, as well, um, in, in that number. So, um, you're, you know, I think it's, I think it's safe to say it's, you know, that, that three times the current capacity is really probably a better gauge of, of, of how much growth we've got built in.
Are you saying three times the current capacity or three times the current inflow? Flow that, the, the max flow or, or peak flow, or whatever you want to call it?
Right, really, I look that more at the capacity because new growth, you're right, right? New extended sewers and whatnot should have, they're not going to have zero inflow and infiltration, but they're not going to be your big hitters on your peak flows, on your INI, so.
Can you speak to the change in testing that brought this about? The test changed radically about, what, two years ago?
Yeah, two thousand, two thousand nineteen, yeah, about midway through nineteen.
Because before that, all of this, this was significantly different before. Who changed, who changed the testing?
I, I then came in for inspection and we did grab samples and they made us install a composite sampler.
Okay.
So, to that date, we can see the data change where we did a composite versus a grab.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it was.
Sue would put the composite in five years earlier, the, the data would be very similar?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And we did double sample, we bought a portable, um, went out and tested areas. We then tested it a couple of times coming into the plant and all the data matched.
We, we looked at, um, we even took the time to kind of look around at some of our different sewer sheds within the collection system to see if maybe we were getting more pollutants coming from a certain area, starting then. You know, was the difference in data because the data actually changed? Or was the difference in data because we were doing a more accurate sampling procedure? And it's not a, it wasn't a testing procedure, it was, it was how the samples are taken, basically. So, and it, it, you know, it's kind of a testament, I mean, you can see that, that's what's interesting about this to me is our flows are all consistent. You know, I mean, pre and post, because the flow metering is, um, is, is different from what the sampling is. So, uh, yeah, it was, it was. You know, in hindsight, it's really a good thing this was discovered because it would have been, it would have been, you know, i- i- it kind of take, took us back to look at some things in the operations of the plant to say, hey, are we seeing some excessive, you know, solids building up and, um, more frequent need to, uh, you know, land a ply and some of that stuff. And it kind of answered why we're having the challenges that you were once we saw that, uh, saw that data come through.
Is a composite sample an average over time as compared to grab?
Twenty-four hour period.
Mm-hmm.
So, before this time, they were going down there with a jar and grabbing a sample at one point at eight o'clock in the morning. That was your sample for the day. And now we're doing a twenty-four composite, so it runs every hour, pulls a sample into a jar and it looks like that every morning.
Yeah.
Is that when it peaks, is that when the rainy month occurs?
Sure, yeah. Some, um, a lot of times you don't see your BOD as much move like that. Definitely on this one, which is showing this flow, um, but there's a little bit of correlation, like if you see this peak here. So, this is flow coming in, so that's with January. And then you see January here, we're actually a little bit lower on, uh, on BOD. So, uh, we do see a little seasonal change and that's organic load, if you will.
What's, what's the green line? I can't read that.
Oh, the green line is the proposed design loading. So, this is what the new design loading is of the plant, so that it will have. And it doesn't have to be above because it, these numbers do, uh, do average out, uh, as opposed to like an instantaneous peak.
Is there a load level that has to be met for IDAM or EPA?
They look at, um, as far as load goes, they kind of look, whenever we do the design, we have to provide all this, these calculations to them and all this data, and there's certain criteria that they look at with those loads that we have to design the plant to. So, it's, it's looked at through that. Um, and then your permit does have limitations on your discharge of what it is. And it also, and they also want to see a certain removal per- percentage from the beginning of the process to the end of the process, so.
And you said that was bucked up three hundred percent, was that what that figure said?
Mm-hmm.
Three times.
Yeah.
But based on.
The new data.
Past history.
Yep.
Current data, how, how long will that get, get us through until we're back again?
Oh, you'll, you, like I said, that, that all gets taken, yeah, that all gets taken into account with that potential growth of the city as well. Because we don't just flatline that pound per day loading, that's also projected forward with the higher flows.
So, so where, get us through five years, ten years?
Twenty-year planning period.
So, that gets you twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty years.
And I think we've got some contingency built in with that too, so.
If this plant could handle the capacity of people, we wouldn't have to upgrade the plant there, would we? Or is this something because we need to do something different to treat it wise? If we had, for example, if our town was a little smaller and we're still operating like we are, we wouldn't have to upgrade a town, would we? What if we had bigger lagoons, so to speak? Like, just, just, you know, quick.
Right, right.
If we make a lagoon three times as big as what it is, the whole day excess.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, I mean, but.
It would not, it, it would not, you know, if you, if you're going to drill a line in the sand, say, we're not going to grow anymore, we're not going to do anymore, um, what else could, could, could we do? Um, you really, it wouldn't be cost effective to build a lagoon system or something like that. Storage large enough to be able to handle this kind of flowing and trickle it back through the plant. It's, um, it's just, for lack of a better word, way too undersized to be able to handle what we see those volume peaks.
Essentially, is it flowing faster than we can treat it, is that what you're saying?
During peak times, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
No matter what we did, it would still flow at that rate.
And then, and then the problem comes in, you know, is if you, if you were a combined sewer community, you know, we would have certain restrictions on how long you could hold that before you have to run it back through in the plant. But the whole time you're holding it, you're basically treating it. I mean, you have to do some type of aeration and, and you know, it's not just stagnant, no cost, just hole in the ground. Um, we've got, there's additional treatment that has to occur. And what ends up happening, seeing, seeing this more frequently with the weather patterns, is we don't get that dry pattern after those rain events to be able to slow things down through the plant and run this back through.
Yeah, it rains two days later.
Right, yeah, and we're already full, so.
So, go ahead. Well, we, you know, we're always thinking of growth, seems like, you know, with new subdivisions and there's industry in town. There might be industry come later, but what, what would the far reaching, um, impact of a sewer connection ban be to a town like Huntingburg?
So, when you technically reach ninety percent of your capacity and they're looking at flow, they're not as much looking at some of the loadings that we worry about for treatment. When you reach that ninety percent point, at that point, then IDAM says, you have to have a plan approved by us for what you're going to do to increase your capacity of your plant, or we're not going to allow you to issue any new taps on your system. Um, so it would completely stagnate in growth, uh, within the city, so.
Can you go back to that, uh, the one that showed like the increase of three hundred percent? Yeah, that one. Where, so what were those numbers from or when, what date did these numbers come from as far as like the peak existing months?
Yeah, so the peak flows, those, those, we've, we've checked those, they originated back in two thousand nineteen. I think we did update those two years ago and we sent a modified PERN to, uh, Rural Development. Rechecked those again, um, and they still follow the trending. Um, I can tell you, like, the residential growth, there is a prescribed formula that we, we have to follow in these reports that we put together, uh, that looks back at the historical residential growth and bases it on that.
Like on the residential growth, if I'm reading it correctly, that's basically sixty-seven thousand gallons a day. So, we have a Hunter's Crossings of Division, which has how many houses in it?
I think it peaks at a hundred and forty-three?
A hundred and forty-three, so at the.
There are a hundred and thirty seven now.
Like a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty-three, it seems like we've eaten into a good deal of that sixty-seven thousand already of those numbers.
Hundred and forty-three, um, homes and IDAM requires you to use three hundred and ten gallons per day per home. In actuality, you're going to see somewhere around a hundred and fifty to two hundred gallons per day for home. So, if we said two hundred, that's twenty-eight six, so it's pretty good. But, um, what I'm getting at, what I was going to say too, is if you look at your existing peak month, that's your highest thirty day period. And when IDAM looks at the capacity for the sewer ban specifically, it's over a year. So, if you look at your annual flows, your annual flows were somewhere around one point three or one point four million gallons a day, averaged over three hundred and sixty-five days. So, that's why I was saying, there's some, there's growth built into this number that you don't see specifically allocated here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to be where we.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, you said a plant need, if it's ninety percent capacity, you need to do something to the larger, right? And where are we at?
We are at a hundred and twenty-seven percent.
And how do we get, how do we get permits to add these costs?
It goes back to that interlocutory agreement and that understanding of this bypass or this wet weather treatment system that you have. As I said, it's, it's, it's pretty unique within the state of Indiana that you've been able to do this as long as you have.
That's what I learned, I mean, how do we get away with it?
And, 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 and the, the difficulty's been, you know, we convinced the.
I think our attorney could have a better word than you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We've convinced the, and when I say there's, there's that vulnerability, it's because the permitting folks have understood the process that we're doing. But then the compliance folks at IDAM are looking at this differently than what they did. And they're saying, wait a minute, we're not gonna, we don't want you recording this as, it, it almost seems like you're doing full treatment, but you're not. We want this now to be considered overflow essentially, a bypassing treatment. And that's a, that would be a very bad thing.
I was also thinking, they should have forced us at one point to say, here it is, you know.
Done a good job doing it this long, so.
My memory serves me well, I think we had the first agreement with IDAM in the state for this.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I think we've, I think we've ran that course.
I think there may have been maybe another one since, but I, I, I think the number's too in the state.
Not very many in the state.
If you look at the numbers, it's about thirty, thirty-five percent over, but normally they would require us.
Yeah, pretty much.
To be allowed.
So, does this plant plan like allow for increase, increases in the future? Or some sort of, if we would need to have more demand, does this allow for an ease, that the design has an easy?
Yes, yeah, there's actually a couple of different ways you can approach that. So, um, you know, we've got a, a, a three cell system, if you will. You could obviously add another cell, um, that would increase the capacity. There's also some modifications you can make to the operation of each individual cell that can grade, that can gain capacity as well without a lot of capital outlay with it. Um, so there's, there's a, there's actually some newer treatment technologies that IDAM is considering allowing in the state that would allow us to gain some capacity within the tank sizes that we have currently, uh, currently in the project, so.
Not sure of the terminology, but I read recently, like maybe within the last six months, about some new requirement that subdivisions or small communities outside of our city limits would somehow have to have their, instead of, of septic systems, they would have to somehow connect to a bigger municipal system? Am I thinking correctly on that?
Maybe regionalization.
What was that?
Regionalization.
Yeah, maybe, um, but, you know, I think there's, there's talk about that and.
Yeah.
I don't know if communities or subdivisions outside of town at some point would be required to connect to the city's system, I mean, have you heard?
Yes, yeah, there's, there, there's a couple of different pushes on that front. Um, there's obviously unsuhr communities, um, uh, that they're, they're now discovering, do not have adequate land space available within acreage of each home to have what's called an onsite treatment system. Um, and, uh, so that means if you don't have space to, to redo it or do it properly, what are your options? Um, so we have a big push with unsuhr communities needing to connect. It's, it's more feasible for them to connect to an existing plant. Um, IDAM and there's regulations coming in place about re, that's where regionalization comes in. They don't want to see a lot of small treatment plants scattered around because they've noticed over the years, those don't get maintained well and you end up having permit violations and whatnot because you've got a scattering of these smaller plants that can't be maintained and aren't properly maintained. They'd rather see more centralized treatment. They'd rather see more centralized treatment in a community that can adequately handle it and get that flow to that facility. It, it, it allows for more regular maintenance, more consistent maintenance. Um, we've got a shortage in operators across the state, um, so it's helping, it helps with that front. So there's actually funding, um, or the funding agencies really look favorably on projects that it, that involve regionalization, getting some of those unsuhred or even maybe currently suhred but have inadequate facilities and they're too small to really maintain them.
So do you guys see Honeyburg's location and geographically other subdivisions or, or smaller communities around us that may someday be forced to connect into our system? And are we thinking that way as far as growth?
Yeah, 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 definitely. I think the, you know, it kinda gets into the county's plan to some extent. Um, but uh, you know, from, I can, I can speak to from IDIM's perspective, they would much prefer to see you guys be kind of the hub for treatment in any surrounding, either new development or existing areas that um, maybe are served, maybe are not served, uh, to come to Honeyburg for treatment.
Just to be clear, there have been some communities that are having those discussions outside of, but nothing in Honeyburg. Has none of those discussions have occurred or we've been approached by any means. There are other communities around us that, that's probably gonna happen.
Hasn't the population of DuBois County already reached a point where you cannot have a septic system? Do you have to connect?
I'm not real, I, I don't think it has to do with the population. It usually has to do with the amount of land that you have on your specific.
Years back in the nineties, it was population, we were right at that where they were gonna ban septic systems.
Was it five acres now?
I, I don't know.
A lot, a lot of communities cannot afford to go the route that we are and that's where a lot, some of it's coming from.
Yeah.
And you know, that, that we can't, we, we, we can't either, but you know, we're, we're at a point where there's the options are not there. Uh, I think every option's been investigated and.
Are we gonna completely shut down our current facility once we get a new facility?
So. I'll go back to this. There's some of the tankage that.
That's a good question.
That gets re, that gets reused. This is probably about the best. Yeah, so the new facility's going in this green space here, um, majority of it. You've got some control buildings and things. We've got a couple, uh, these tanks will be taken out and we've got another tank that's being located here. We're gonna reuse this tank. We're gonna continue to utilize the drying beds, but if you recall, we've, we've also got on the dock at a, a centrifuge dewatering process, uh, project that will come up uh, later through the course of design. Uh, but for the most part, you know, everything you see here and here or the, these two lagoons will no longer be used. But we're gonna keep this lagoon. Um, and we're gonna impact it a little bit by construction coming up through here. That's the newer one. It's got the newest liner and whatnot. Um, we're gonna go in and keep that just in case we still would need some wet weather flow. Don't have to do away with it for, uh, for construction purposes. So, uh, you know, we've got a little bit of buffer built in there as well, but for the most part, you know, this is, this is the heart of the beast here, um, and it'll completely be done away with, so.
For your value engineering, it was not removing those things that we did as a.
Right, right, absolutely.
So there, there could be some structures that may not be used to the capacity that they are now, to the extent they are now. But will be in place just, but, cause we don't have to.
We're gonna keep them then? I mean, so can we borrow, can we use them again down the road in case we expand again?
Yeah, this, this absolutely, this stuff.
Yeah.
Or a lot of these, these, the components, there's a lot of mechanical components and things in those that it's not worth keeping. Uh, trying to keep up in the event that you would ever use it in the future, so it gets back to that age issue that. But this is, is uh, very few mechanical components, things to, to, you know.
Well, I kept thinking like, okay, so if we, if we build it and we expand down the road by bringing in another community? You know, it's like, I hate to bring the rate up for everybody just to cover that, you know?
Right.
Something, why can't we use?
Right, 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 yeah, that, 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 those components are really at a point where um, you, you, you wouldn't be able to keep them maintained and, and functional if they were gonna come online. And then, and just the, the, the process flow itself to try to, uh, I guess work those in with the new system really wouldn't, wouldn't add any benefit. Um, with the new, uh, with the new system that you're gonna have, like I said, you're gonna be cost ahead to actually do some things to increase capacity through it rather than try to maintain and utilize those old, those old facilities. We've got a, uh, not to sidebar, but we've got a, a clarifier tank that we reused in a rehabilitation process, project, and a clarifier tank is what one of these are as well. It had sat unused for about twenty years. And with the intent that, hey, if we ever needed it in the future, they would have it, the tank was there. It was difficult to install when they did it. And so we completely redid the guts of it, the inside of the tank, put it online, operated it for thirty days, the floor of the tank broke. Because as it had sat over time, and then once they started, there was piping under the floor, it started recirculating flow through that piping. Well, the piping had separated, it sat for thirty years and not been used, and it undermined the soils that were underneath the tank floor. And then once we put it back in the service, it broke. So it's one of those good intention, but now we're spending another million dollars to fix that tank.
Any other questions out there before we bring Buzz up?
So the intention of this is that it's gonna get us through the next twenty years?
The planning period is twenty, I think it will last. Forty, um, if it does last twenty, it's probably a good thing because that means you've had that much growth and you're getting that much more use out of the plant, um, so.
But it mean the capacity you think will get us through for this next one?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Excellent job and great, great questions, I tell you. The, uh, for the record, I'm Buzz Cron with OW Cronin Associates out of, uh, we're out of Westfield, but we're in Noblesville, Indiana now. They tore my building down for a road project, so, in Westfield. But uh, anyway, just uh, you know, echoing Glenn's comment, sure would have been nice, we could have done this three years ago before all this hyperinflation and so on. But there is good news, you know, because we do have almost eight point two million dollars in grants that uh, we're gonna receive in buying down this project. Uh, we already had a significant commitment of about, uh, let's see, over twenty-one million in uh, bond funding from USDA Rural Development at one point one-two-five percent for forty years. And uh, our second tranche would be about nineteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand. Also forty-year term, but that will be at two point one-two-five percent. Both are ex, you know, you, you can't get money, I'll quote the mayor, I mean, that inexpensive, inexpensive money. Now, the other thing that I think is a positive out of this is that in those two bond numbers, we're looking at forty million, seven hundred thousand instead of forty million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand. That was in the books that you all received last week. It's not enough of a reduction to change the rate plan, but, but it was a positive uh, result in rebidding Division B that uh, saved about two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars off of what the estimate was in, in going into that. And we're also re, part of that forty million, seven hundred thousand is going to be used to refinance all of our existing debt at these low, low rates. So, the plan is we have almost two point eight million dollars of uh, three different bond issues that will be, well, two bond issues and a loan that the elect, we've owed the electric utility over a million dollars for several years. That, that's gonna get wrapped in at this one point one-two-five percent interest rate. Um, and then we're going to use funds on hand to retire the twenty fifteen bonds. That's about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We'll pay the accrued interest up till the date we take those out, but it has to, it has to occur before, before or during the closing. I think we're talking about maybe doing that twenty fifteen bond a few days before the closing with Rural Development is the ultimate lender, but we're also dealing with interim funding through the Indiana Bond Bank. And they've, they've had a pretty good program, you know. We don't get quite as good a rate from them, but during the course of the construction period, they will invest those funds and we'll just get a, build a net interest cost. I think their rate's gonna be about three point six-five percent, but as we draw the funds down, they're gonna be investing those funds and probably earning positive arbitrage during the construction period. So our interest, our net interest expense, we've got two million dollars factored into our, the pro formas, but hopefully it's gonna be significantly less than that. We do have to pay the interest during the construction. That was part of the deal we had with uh, Rural Development. But uh, since we're not gonna have to pay those other bonds, we'll have plenty to pay, pay that interest during construction out of our current, you know, cash flow uh, with the, with these rates. Um, let me see what other things that came up here. Yet again, we're creating, you know, we're tripling, over tripling the capacity at the treatment plant. Go ahead and, here's our final project cost summary. Again, we come, we come down to the forty million, seven hundred thousand, but uh, the base construction costs, including a pretty healthy contingency allowance, are about forty-six point one million. Then we've got about two point eight million of uh, refinancing existing debt factored in. Uh, and uh, then minus out the eight point two million of grants, so we end up at the forty million, seven hundred thousand.
Buzz, do we have that in our packet somewhere, that sheet?
I. There, there is, the, the one that's in the packet, total is forty million, nine sixty-six. The, uh, the reduction.
On page three of the rate study. Page three, but now, bottom line, it says forty million, nine sixty-six.
Right, it's actually gonna come in a couple hundred thousand less, at forty million, seven hundred thousand. I'll, I'll see that you get enough data on that, but uh, I think those bids just came in a week or so ago, is that right? It wasn't a big enough change to kill a lot more trees, but uh, but it is, you know. It is a positive. Yeah. So any rate, that, that's sort of the, the summary right now, and again, we're projecting, we're using about a three percent net interest cost, hopefully it'll be less than that because I think we're gonna be spending most of the grant money first. Uh, we need to spend the SWIFT money, the five million dollars of SWIFT money has to be spent by the end of the year. And uh, on the EDA grant, is that a similar timeframe or are they?
Similar, if I remember correctly.
They, they may be more proportionate on that one as far as how that draws down, so. So, but we do have to close with Indiana Bond Bank on the forty point seven million. And then they will invest that and we'll earn arbitrage on, on those funds while they're, you know, until we get to that spend down.
If you look at the project budget, uh, that some of you have, should have in front of you, a lot of those funds and the reason they're allocated in that way are in order to use those uh, grant funds first. To use them by not only save somewhat on interest, but also allows us to stay in compliance with the funding agencies. I think we had four or five maybe uh, uh, changes or, or uh, we kept getting, uh, it kept allowing us to hold off a little bit, extend it a little bit, and, and they're done. You know, we'll get no more, no more extensions on the grants, so it does have to be in contract by, I believe, June nineteenth, but leaves the date.
I do wanna give the folks at Rural Development a big plug because they have been absolutely accommodating to us with all these, you know, sort of major, major changes. And, and I'll echo uh, Eric's observations that we've seen that same scenario in a number of wastewater projects, water projects. It's just incredible, the inflation costs due to, well, inflation, supply chain issues, there's, you know, COVID, all the above, but uh, it is what it is and we're at a point where we've gotta pull the trigger or, or risk losing some of those favorable funding without any change in what really, what, what we need to do. But that's sort of a, you know, a summary of, of where we are with the project costs. And again, then at the end of construction, Rural Development will pay off the Indiana Bond Bank. This will be our ban two. We have a ban one that paid for uh, the preliminary design engineering and, and so forth, but uh, ban two will be construction. And then after construction, the USDA will take it out with a forty-year loan. And we've got those rates locked in, the one point one-two-five percent on uh, over twenty-one million, twenty-one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand and two point one-two-five percent on the other nineteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand. So, I'm gonna go ahead and jump to the, the uh, Indiana Code sets forth the rate-making formula for municipal utilities. This uh, for municipal sewage works, it's IC thirty-six, nine twenty-three. Don't be so impressed, I know all these code references. There's about two of them that I use all the time. That's one of them. Phil knows them all, though. But any rate, uh, it establishes the statutory revenue requirements for a municipal utility. And it's interesting, oh, I've got electric in here, but it's, uh, it, it actually is a, mirrors the public utility statute. But uh, for wastewater utilities and water, electric and gas, there's a shall be sufficient language in the Indiana Code to provide for the cash operation and maintenance expenses, debt service on bonds and other indebtedness, debt reserves and working capital, and then depreciation and/or an allowance for replacements and improvements. And so those are the statutory mandatory revenue requirements, and that's really where we're drawing the line with the wastewater rates. Several years ago, we stopped making payments and little taxes out of the sewage works. And uh, we're not including any kind of rate of return on plant in, in the sewer rates. So we really have the rates down to really a bare bones minimum that we need to, number one, satisfy our bondholders. And number two, to cover the reasonable and necessary costs of operation and, and have some allowance for capital projects going forward. I don't think we're gonna get to fully fund our depreciation, which uh, you know, for years, a lot of utilities can't, just couldn't do it with the rates that they had in place. But uh, we'll have, we'll have about four hundred thousand a year that we can spend on recapitalization of existing assets and slip lining and doing other INI reduction projects and so forth. But uh, hopefully at the treatment plant, we'll be good for several years. There's probably a warranty on, on most of the equipment, I would imagine. But uh, so that, that's sort of the approach to the, the rates. These are the rates that are being proposed. Right now, our uh, monthly treatment charge is six dollars and thirty cents per hundred cubic feet plus a thirty-one dollar and seventy-four cent base charge. What we're proposing is to do a, a two-step increase that would phase in, begin to phase in, hopefully in June or soon after, as that, as can be. hopefully in June or soon after, as that as can be reasonably, you know, they have to reprogram their computer and do a number of things, but that's sort of our target, to start billing the new rates in June. Probably wouldn't collect the money till July, but for the June billing period. And they would go up to, the volume charge would first go to $7.40, and then up to $8.15 per 100 cubic feet, whereas the base charge would go from $31.74 per month to $37.29 per month, and then up to $41 per month. So when we get to the end, the, and we would have those rates phase in in 2025.
Buzz, is it necessary to do it that quick?
Well, we are going to have potentially $2 million. I'm I'm going to show you the cash flow projections here next, and, you know, there's probably room for a month or two, but the sooner we can get to that point, the better, but that's a good question, Terry, you know. We're we're suggesting to do it in, you know, so we get a full year under our belt in 2025, before the project's completed, we'll have to have it all in place by 2026. Interesting thing, just paying interest on, you know, on the Indiana Bond Bank construction loan isn't that much different than what our full debt service requirement's going to be. In fact, our full debt service requirement actually goes down a little bit than what a full year of interest on the Indiana Bond Bank loan will be, so.
We'll go from about 3/6 to probably blended 1.1, you know, 1.1s and 2.1s in there.
Yeah.
So it even though it's less money.
It'll probably be about 1.5, when it blends, it's probably 1.5%, so. And then, and and plus, we get a 40-year term, which really helps bring the rates down. If we had to pay this over 20 years, it would be, you know, a much bigger, bigger jump.
Can you, can you speak to the rate changes we made in the last couple of years?
Yeah.
And where and where that money is in this project or in the, how is that being utilized to aid this?
Yeah, we're going to use it to pay off one of the bonds early. And then we're also going to, instead of financing the capitalized interest, we're going to pay that on a pay-go basis. We're going to pay that instead of borrow the money. The rates will be sufficient to to cover that, and we'll still have a decent level of working capital in the operating fund, because once, you know, once we start incurring the full debt on the, even on the IBB, ban two, you know, as we get into toward the end of '25, there won't be that much interest earnings coming in on the, you know, what they're going to manage for us, they're going to, they're going to invest that money for us. But so we'll, we'll start hitting that full interest on the roughly $41 million, $40,700,000. And that that's why, you know, it would be good to put in that phase two just as quickly as possible, but without doing it all in one step.
So what is the amount that you pulled from the existing wastewater surplus on your sources?
Let me jump to this slide here. The. Actually. About about 2.0, in total, about $2.4 million.
That's what was accumulated from the past rate increases.
I mean, we're planning on still having some positive cash flow to be able to do that without draining all our cash. We probably got about $2.4 million right now, but we don't want to drain that all down to zero. I'm projecting we'll have probably a little over a million dollars left in the operating funds after construction is completed. Because we'll, we'll still be, you know, generating.
So what we, so what we generate between now and the end of construction will equal about $3 million, and we got about $2 million in interest? Is that how I'm reading it?
I'm sorry.
Somewhere I see $2 million in interest in there.
Yes, that's, that in, on the Rural Development, they count capitalized interest in their project costs, but they're also counting on us paying for that capitalized interest. That's why I show it as an in and an out on this. But part of that $2 million will recoup, I think our debt service, when we finally close with RD, is about $1,004,000 per year. The, let me jump to that schedule. We'll show. Okay. Here's where we are right now, we're generating about $2.5 million per year. I'm assuming that we'll get about six months of cash collections on the Phase One rates in 2024, and we'll get a full year at those, at the Phase One rate in 2025. And if if we put the Phase Two in in January, it would be about another $300,000 that we would generate. In terms of, we've, we've escalated the existing operating cost by about 3% per year, just inflationary adjustments, but we've also added about $130,000 for polymers and for one additional staff person, which I understand is probably needed with, without even doing the project. Adding that person is an important move, and certainly after the project's completed, they'll, they'll need that other person. But we factored that in to occur at some point during the construction period, that that additional employee would be added. And then the polymers, you know, we've added that into the the Phase Two rate increase. So the interest on the ban two, one year's interest on the ban two, is actually about 50,000, you know, $45,000 more than what the total principal and interest will be after we refinance it with Rural Development, because of the lower interest rate we're getting from them after construction. But I think what happened years ago, and we've seen the same thing with the state revolving fund, they would commit, they would obligate these funds oftentimes before construction even started. And then they would run into higher bids or higher change orders, this and that, and then they'd have to end up with a second loan before they even, you know, finish construction, they'd have to close on a second loan. And so now, they've set up this program with the Bond Bank, where the Bond Bank will fund the construction loan. And so by the time Rural Development comes in, everything's done. And that that exact amount will be, you know, right-sized at that point. And there is a pretty significant contingency allowance factored in, so that hopefully we can do the sludge drying bit, or the belt press.
Centrifuge?
Centrifuge, I'm sorry, it has to do with, you know, drying the sludge quicker. And so the hope is that there won't be many change orders, and that we can, we can put that centrifuge in with this low-interest loan money we're able to get committed from Rural Development. And, you know, if we're a couple hundred thousand shy, that's another reason to have these rates in place, because we could shore that up and still make sure that happens at the end, you know. Obviously, if we spent $3 million on construction contingencies, that's going to be a different picture. But but the hope is to have it sized so that there'll be money left over that to put that centrifuge in right away, and then that'll streamline the sludge drying process at the plant. And, you know, we've, we've got it covered in with the low-interest loan, rather than having to figure out how to borrow the money later and do that project. So when we look at 2025, if we had to shell out the full years of interest during construction, we'd have a debt coverage ratio at the end of about 128%. Then when we make the switch to Rural Development, I've got another years of inflation factored into that. We still end up with a coverage ratio of 128%, which is about $390,000. And that was a similar target, I think, that we shot for with the original rates, that, you know, it's still not fully funding our depreciation. Oftentimes, when you look at your monthly or quarterly financial report, it looks like, you know, there's a loss because we're depreciating a big plant. That number will probably get a lot bigger when we have, you know, another $40 million of plant to depreciate. But but what we want to make sure is that we've got enough at the end of, you know, after covering, because for the first five years, we'll have to fund up a debt service reserve fund as well. So that's, that's another thing that really that cash on hand will help us weather through is the first five years of funding, shoring up that debt service reserve account. Because they'll have, they'll give us a longer period of time to accumulate that money, but having it fully funded means that, you know, once it's fully funded, then you can use all that for ongoing replacements and improvements, INI projects, slip lining lines, and still having some funds to put towards that infiltration and info reduction. And on that particular point, I see a lot of communities that have two or three times the amount of INI that you're experiencing. It, it's not a shocking number, 60, at 60% of your flow, it sounds dramatic. If it was the water utility, it would be crazy. If it was the gas utility, we'd be on fire. But but it's not an uncommon thing with wastewater to have INI, and what is often determined after going through all the studies they do on where the key spots are in the collection system to fix and so on, it's oftentimes decided that it's cheaper to build the capacity to treat the INI than it is to, you know, tear up all the roads downtown, you know, to replace. Unfortunately, probably a lot of those leaky sewers are in your older parts of town and downtown areas. It just gets to be, and and if you're only going to hit a 15% reduction in the long run anyway, it's a lot of commotion to go with that 100%, but to do it.
Some of those are under state highways that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, when they do something, then they make you move them. So anyhow, we end up at a coverage ratio of about 128%. I think our, for SRF, the minimum coverage ratio is 125. Rural Development, I believe, is about 120 for a project like this. So we're a little bit above that, we've got a little bit of cushion there, but not, not very much. And $400,000 in the big picture is not too much money to have for ongoing replacements and improvements. But we should have about $1 million left in the operating fund by the time we get to the end of construction. What does this mean? And I'm jumping through to the final rate here. Right now, your lower volume, I think the mayor confirmed that over half of the residential customers use 2,800 gallons or less.
Yeah, the median point's right around 2,800 gallons, which means half the people are less than that and half over that. It's based upon existing clients, I think 73% from what we ran with with Tom here, numbers he gave me were under 4,000 gallons. So you're, you're looking at most people, I mean, I'm at 2,200 as a family. So for me, that end rate's probably going to be about 65 for me.
Yeah.
It's going to be somewhere around 68 or so to 70 for that 2,800 gallon user. Not too many people use, it's like 27% that were using more than 4,000 gallons.
4,000 gallons is sort of the benchmark that a lot of the funding agencies look at when they compare city to city for different grant programs and so forth.
RD and Community Development block grants all can look at that, at the 4,000 gallons where they look at it. And when it gets above that 65, that's when you become eligible for more of their funds, I guess.
And and even that has been tough to do because of the demand, they're seeing so many rates over $100 a month.
So the, the chart that we have here that shows comparable, that's based upon 4,000 gallons here. So what's this in our packet, for Exhibit A, Schedule A, is that rate is different than what's on the schedule here? At least what I see, 7692 versus 7559.
That's the 4,000 gallon, I'm going to.
Right.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I think, I think this chart was done.
Yeah, it is about $2 off.
This, this one was, was an old chart, but I apologize for that, that's why I didn't have that in the slideshow. But it, yeah, there is a, we've had a number of variations on this exhibit. The final number is 8458 for 4,000 gallons. I'll, I'll get that fixed and sent out to you, Mayor.
You're mentioning gallons there, that you're, you're basing that off the gallons of water used for home, compared to what's going out. Has there been anything done, I know we was here a year or so ago, for a water increase of helping the commercial users, the industrial users, the homeowners to help reduce the amount of water they use through efficient fixtures, through less watering of lawns?
Well, the fact that your average is already quite a bit less than the state average, you know, I don't know if that's been, I don't know that the city has a specific program.
Now, we, I have spoken to a couple of superintendents, I said, as we go through this process, client education's going to be very important, being able to show people how to conserve.
It may not have been cost-effective before.
There has to be an education piece to this thing. I mean, I take three-minute showers, you know, and those type of things. What most people refer to as military showers, versus my daughters, they just take 20-minute showers.
Navy shower's better, wet, soap up, get wet, get wet, get out, one minute.
You buy shower heads with timers on them.
But I mean, that's, that's a big part, and could, could possibly be reduced by helping those people understand, especially the commercial users. I mean, everybody thinks water's free, by 2040, water's going to be the next oil, so.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, and if we can, I mean, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of old toilets that are three, four gallons that are flushing every three, four times.
We've had that internal discussion, you know, just that part of this is if the rates go up, can you, can you hedge that through conservation and keep, keep it on?
Well, if we have, if we have a significant change in the water usage, though, won't that affect all of our numbers and our ability to pay for these things? Because if our, if people are substantially using less water than we currently budgeted for, then.
Hopefully we offset it with growth.
I mean, that's anytime you.
Yeah, that, you're exactly right.
Double-edged sword.
Yeah, to that, to that point, you know, they're, they're very, it will be the heavy users that are going to be able to conserve. I think in your numbers, we did figure in some new customer growth to.
Yeah.
330, I think, residences.
Actually, for closing with Rural Development, we have to use what's here now, so.
I don't see that.
If we did a longer projection, we would probably do. If we did a longer projection, we would probably do that, but to do the closing, we have to base it on what's here right now. So, we don't, we don't have growth factored in, in the customer base, but hopefully the growth will exceed potential reductions. But, but yeah, the safety or the public outreach is a good idea to pursue.
Yeah. So.
Oh, we do have a list. It's a list.
So, that, I believe, concludes my prepared comments.
If I see that right, my rates are going to go up $30 in the next two years, right? So, from 3174 to 6270.
Well, no, the current rate, I just broke it down between the base charge and the usage charge.
I think it's the fourth line, the fifth line, 48.
This is the total current rate right here, I apologize.
That $30 wasn't a part of my question. Yeah, it's a, so my, my question really is, that's a pretty big jump regardless. What are we doing to not have to have this happen again in two years, three years? Because that's what's happened when we did the water. We came back like every two years and we're raising the rates. Or is there some way that this isn't going to happen again, or?
Well, if I, if I had a crystal ball for, I, you know, I'd be, you know, assuming that things stay on track the way we think they're going to stay on track, these rates should last, you know, at least four or five years and, but I wouldn't see any major stair steps. You're at a big stair step right now, replacing your entire treatment plant. And other communities are going through that, that same process as they get their new permitting requirements. And so, you're going to see this, this type of thing happening in other, other communities as well. Each, each community, you know, the, the rate comparisons are good, but it boils down to every community has its own unique set of facts and circumstances that they've got to deal with and, and that's ultimately what they need to base their decisions on. But everybody is going to be going through these kinds of things when their NPDES permit comes up.
Having a good maintenance plan together and being able to take care of issues that are, some of that is built in there to, to address INI and to address maintenance. Maintenance is where you, this type of plants is where you, you're going to get your most efficiency out of, out of our expenditure. It's like changing the oil in your car, so it's, you know, it's going to last longer. But we can't say, I don't think there's anything we can purchase and say, five years from now, we're not going to have to do something with it again. So, I, I would hope not. I mean, to, to, most of these plants and experiences do get, you do get a 20 year or better out of those, depending on your growth in the area. We, how much of this one, you know, some of these, so we go back to 1957 on some of these components that are in this, this plant. So, the last increase was to build up revenue that we needed in order to, to begin this one, probably to, and that did occur, so, yeah.
Three years ago would have been great timing.
I, I.
Well, yeah, that was the one.
Yeah, it, it's, we're all sitting here, whatever decision were made, we're all living with the same increase that we're asking others to do, too.
I, I only ask that because I know there's a lot of very low income families, and that's what I'm concerned with. What I'm concerned with, me.
Yeah, low, low income, fixed income, taxes, you got your tax bill, just went through the rut for most people this year and last year.
But I think there's, it's only trending outward, so if we don't do something now, it's going to continue to just, it's unfortunate, but I think it's, it's going to continue to get worse.
Have you done any kind of even unofficial calculation on what current rates are now? So, say we put this off a year, the cost's say 50 million, but the rate that we're financing $40 million of this project on our current rates, 3 percent, 4 percent, whatever they would be, how, how big of an impact is, with the risk of waiting and having to do this even at the same overall cost, but at a current interest rate, how would that affect the rates?
Oh, just repricing this at four and a half, well, to get a 40 year loan, it'd probably be, the current, we just had a bond sale in Bloomington last week. It was a 20 year open market bond with a double A rating, and it went for a little over 4 percent. So, you're looking at over doubling your interest costs plus paying the principal off at twice as quick a time. It, it would be.
Losing $8 million in grants.
It'd be over a hundred dollars a month, easily.
We can't afford to lose the 1.5 percent in the two, whatever point.
Yeah.
Can't afford to lose.
We have to have, we have to have the rates approved, and even though we're stepping them in, they're not going to close our deal without that final rate being pre-approved.
I think probably too, we look at, Eric, you probably addressed the, the 14 million in concrete.
Yeah.
Where that would have been two years ago, would have been more than water grants are the difference, so.
Yeah, they changed how they spell steel, too.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, yeah, we, we have other, there, there will be other limits after, after the June 19th amount that will increase, new, new federal regulations on, on, on purchasing construction that'll require those, that construction costs go up substantially. We know that.
Yes, see, I, I want to thank all of these three different groups, too, for rallying for these special meetings and so forth that are so important to this whole process. And you really do, you know, provide an important cog in this wheel of, you know, local government finance and certainly appreciate what, what you all do. And the questions tonight were terrific. I mean, you've got a very engaged group in, across the board.
You had mentioned an added person. Is, is, is there wages going to be financed for 40 years, or?
No, that's factored into the operating budget. Yeah, we, we can't finance operating costs, unfortunately, you know, that's probably a good thing that we can't.
And then you mentioned the, the drying centrifuge. Is it, is that something that's going to be gotten?
That, that's something, that's something, there's a sufficient amount in our contingency allowance to cover that. Instead of a 5 percent allowance, they let us maintain a 10 percent allowance. So, even if we spend some of the contingency money, we think that we'll have enough to draw upon from our operating funds if needed.
So, so why not just add that to that?
Well, there's a reason, I think, why it was kept separately, and that had to do with rural development, you know, just what's in their plan. But they, they all know that we have that higher amount of contingency allowance with that in mind to do the centrifuge and.
And if we, if we don't have the centrifuge, then we're just stuck with the drying beds?
Yeah.
So, we're just hoping that we have enough?
Well, we think we've got, you know, more than half of it covered, and we'll, we'll find a way to make it work.
There's, you know, that's what the contingency is, is there for us, and we don't have the change orders coming us. We don't have to come back and say, two years now, we're going to need another rate increase, and we need to replace, you know, this and that.
We do have some additional de-watering besides the drying beds in the base project that you, that we've already did, but it's, it's a pretty labor intensive system. It could give you some ability, the, the issues with the drying beds, obviously, you're, you know, take up a lot of space, very weather dependent, and, and you're very limited on when you can get rid of it. And, and that second, that, that last part's really what, what can be most difficult, because if you can't get into the fields to get rid of it, you've got to have someplace to store it, and you've got a short weather window, and just the size of this plant's getting to the point that it's not really feasible to just 100 percent rely on the beds. So, we've got a separate system to the base project that is a, it's a bagging system that goes in a large roll-off container that would allow you to, to landfill that as well as do the land applications. Got some more flexibility built into that. Still really not ideal for a plant of this size. So, if you did the centrifuge, then that gives you much more flexibility. It is going to last you out four years a lot better than the others. So, there is some, something built in to improve over what you got and what's already been did, but if we do, if we're able to do the centrifuge, and we don't do this bagging system, we just do the centrifuge, it would be a lot better for operations.
You said that the centrifuge is more efficient, so, so essentially, maybe that one person may not be needed to look for efficiencies.
We'll probably still need that person, because it is, it does require a bit of work.
Did you already say you're short now?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that was the difference between this chart and the chart that's in the final document here was the, we, we relooked at the operating budget and came up with those two changes. That, that, that was that extra $2.
Yeah, one thing I'll say with our superintendents, I'm glad now we're out there now, we look at budgets and what's budgeted in staffing levels. If they're one or two below, but they can operate, they have been, you know, and that's, we've got a couple here now that are, that are at that level. Same thing in this office, we have, we have four openings in this office that we, we're not going to be filling those. We'll look at a part-time person to fill one of those, just because, right now, we have three people out of the office, and it's difficult to even answer the front door sometimes with different situations, so we'll probably leave some of that out. Every department has that type of situation, so we talk about budgeting an extra person or someone else. That doesn't mean that person's always there, exists. Sometimes trying to find that other person that you need. Obviously, the, the concentration has been, from a safety standpoint, those positions are definitely such as police and fire and those type of things. So, Fire Department here is always staffed for the first time in several years, so.
Yeah, and that was only part of that O and M adjustment. The other part was polymers for, that were determined needed to be included, but.
Yeah, disposal, disposal of those solids are going to be more and more difficult to, to maintain. You can't just go out there and somebody feel like they used to in the past, and that's, that's another probably advantage of the centrifuges, that we'll bring the ability to, to manage that process. Because each year gets tougher, to your point, Eric can think that what's going to be required environmentally five years now is a lot more than what we're seeing today, and having a centrifuge is going to really help, help us efficiently meet the new standards, because they're bigger than the bow.
Any other questions for me? Not, I'll turn it back to Phil probably.
Yeah, the next item on the agenda that we had would be for the Board of Public Works to make a tentative award of the, the collection portion of the project, which is, was rebid, it's Division B, and that bid was, the little bidder was Cooper Rail Servicing.
Yeah.
For $3,591,533.
Division B, collection system, want to talk about what Division B consists of? It's actually those, those items that are outside of the plant, but.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We, we are basically increasing the capacity of the sewers to get flow to the plant, kind of from the south side of town, where we've currently got some surcharging of the sewers down First Avenue, that, you know, there's some valves in the homes that keeps it from backing up into the basements and whatnot, so we want to address some of that issue and increase the capacity of that line to get to the plant as part of this project, so that's the journey.
So, as, as water flows, it all seems to stop at First, First Street in that area, and that's been causing a lot of problems at homes there, but also just, just the normal flow, now that we're able to take more flow, we'd have to have pipes large enough to be able to transport that flow to there. That includes rebuilding of the, there's, there's street rebuilding and things in there, and, and we have worked with street department and along with wastewater, and we'll be getting the other utilities involved on how we can have a smooth street when we're done at a lower cost. I think we've got some answers for that.
When will that take place?
When would that take place?
Is it going to hit?
Uh, no, and part of the contract, we do have not construction times, there are times that Cherry Street intersection has to be open, that would be during festival times, and, so they won't be out there digging while the, while the floats are going down First Street. We, there are areas that that street has to be maintained open, and it's, it's part of the construction schedule.
Is this project First Street or First Avenue?
First Street.
I've heard both.
Yeah, First Street.
And I got a house between them, so I want to know.
There may be a time where Cherry Street's down for a little bit, because there's so many utilities on that intersection. We have electric, we have gas here, we have water, they're going to be impacted, too, at that intersection.
But that will impact First Avenue, and that'll, it'll, I mean, as far as the, it'll, it'll allow that.
It'll relieve.
It'll relieve that, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
Because that's what backs up to.
Right.
Okay.
Washington.
First Avenue, Washington, Brits, all that.
And this was one bid that didn't take our breath away, because it wasn't about what, what was projected.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were 3.5. It was what it was.
I believe that particular street was put in in 75 or something so.
So, Board of Public Works has to group to approve that?
Yes. Which is not us.
So.
That's what I'm asking.
Right now, the Board of Public Works will consist of myself, Mr. Blessing here, Mr. Fitch, and Mr. Schmidt. So, we'll need a motion to accept that bid for construction.
I'll make, I'll make it.
I'll second it.
So, we have First and a Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the construction bid. The next item on the agenda for the Board of Public Works and Safety would be the resolution that would make a recommendation regarding the wastewater utility rates that were presented tonight. You have a resolution in the materials provided for you, and it attaches, as Exhibit A, the actual rates that would be recommended based upon the rate study about O.W. Cronin Associates and the project that you've had described to you tonight. Now, that will go for public hearing at a later time. Yeah, that, the, this is just a recommendation to the council to, to consider these rates, and then the council will introduce an ordinance tonight later to adopt these rates, but it won't be adopted until after a public hearing on 8/14. You're not approving the rates, but you're. Just recommending. You're recommending that the council consider those in the, the tonight's hearing and a further hearing that those set later here during our meeting.
The, the rates and the project.
Yeah, the Board of Public Works has already approved the project. That's been something that they've decided on. So, now, what your job is, is to consider the project and its costs, and whether or not these rates would be sufficient to pay for those costs and, and continue with the other operating expenses. So, the first, the Board of Public Works, first of all, makes its recommendation. So, do we hear a motion to consider the recommendation resolution that's, that you have before you from the Board of Public Works? Still moved?
I'll second.
We have a second, we have First and a Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Voting members from here, basically our front row right here is where we're at. And we do have, the Board of Public Works and Safety, we do have, most of your, originally, you will have to sign for the, for the waiting. And the Rate Advisory Board has in their package the very same resolution determining that after investigating the project and the proposed rate, rates that they would recommend. that after investigating the project and the proposed rate rates that they would recommend to the utility board and to the, I mean, not the utility board, it's the council that these rates be adopted.
Do we have any motions among the members?
I will move to accept the resolution based upon Exhibit A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have first, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, we have one, one name. Yeah, well. Carries in there. Okay, it's three to one.
Okay, this resolution, those of you who voted in favor.
I want to thank you, all of you. I know that you all followed your hearts and your mind in making your decisions. And this is not an easy thing to do. Whether you voted yea or nay, it was a tough decision both ways. I understand that, but after, at this point, you can, you're free to leave. We'll adjourn the meeting. You can stay, not renting you out of your, by any means, but the council has other business. They'll go through it, you're free to stay to be a part of that. And I appreciate your efforts and I know you've all been looking at this, this materials as we've emailed out the mass number of documents and I appreciate that. Okay.
That's what I guess was.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say the motion.
Well, now we have, council will be asked to consider introduction of the sewer works rate ordinance, I think was sent out to you in the board package.
It's pre-numbered, right? Did I give you those numbers?
Oh, that's right, you did.
I didn't have a number on it, did you?
I'm sorry, is it seventeen?
The, the rate was two thousand twenty-four zero seven.
Zero seven. So tonight, your ask would be to introduce a number, the rate ordinance is two thousand twenty-four oh seven. You wouldn't, you cannot adopt it tonight. You can only adopt it after a subsequent public hearing. So what you'd be asked to do tonight is introduce this ordinance by motion and vote and then also set a public hearing on this ordinance for May fourteenth. That's your next regular council meeting.
So you need a motion to introduce?
Introduce a number.
Introduce the two thousand twenty-four and zero seven.
I'll make a motion to introduce.
We have a motion to introduce by councilperson Ware. We have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And then to set this ordinance for public hearing at May fourteenth at five thirty.
We have a motion to set a public hearing date. I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. At May fourteenth. So that, that hearing is set for, public hearing is set for five fourteen twenty-four at regular meeting time, at five thirty. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Eric, have you said, correct?
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have a consideration for an ordinance, part of the history behind the State Board of Council requires us.
We do have, we have to, actually, what I introduce and hopefully pass tonight, the bond ordinance. So we have, you have an amended bond ordinance. As you recall, we adopted a bond ordinance to fund the project back in two thousand twenty, but because of cost overruns, we have to amend the bond ordinance. That original bond ordinance provided for bonds not to exceed twenty-five million dollars. Because of cost overruns, this bond ordinance would authorize bonds not to exceed fifty million dollars. However, as you saw in Buzz's report, the anticipated bond issue will be forty million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. But we always build a little leeway in there in case something goes, goes wrong. But this ordinance would authorize issuing bonds not to exceed fifty million dollars to be paid with interest rates not to exceed five percent. And as you heard, about half of that funding will be at one point one two five percent and the other half will be at about two point one two five percent. Bonds are to be paid over forty years with annual interest and principal payments, or actually semi-annual interest payments and annual principal payments. And they can be paid early. And we could also issue bonds on a parity with them if we need additional funding at a later time, so long as we meet coverage tests with our revenue as revenues. But tonight, we'd ask that you consider introducing this ordinance and suspending rules and adopting on the same night as introduced.
Make a motion, please.
This is, uh, eight? Is it zero eight?
Two thousand twenty-four zero eight.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend rules and adopt on the same night as introduced.
I'll second.
We have first and second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Adopt.
Adoption or passage?
Pass.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion by Mr. Ware to. Any second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again.
Okay, now, Kissel.
Aye.
Volty.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Vowens. Five ayes, no names.
I was confused.
His speed, his speed, that's not funny, gets a little.
We do have a consideration of ordinance promotional expenses. That ordinance came from, actually was derived from State Board of Accounts conversations, I guess, with their town clerk regarding that our existing line item for promotional expenses was too vague. I don't know if we want to have any questions.
Yeah, the State Board of Accounts takes a position that you can, you can expend money for promotional things and for the betterment of the community, but you have to have an ordinance that authorizes that. And looking through our ordinances, we never specifically had an ordinance that authorized it.
We had line items on the.
On the budget.
It was always budgeted, but never explained what it was, so. Now it is, it's the ordinance. So in order to enact that ordinance, we would.
People do the same process if you choose to, to introduce it tonight and then suspend rules.
Motion introduced.
I'll second.
What number is this?
Two thousand twenty-four zero nine. McFerrin, Ware.
Yes. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, adopt the same.
We have to vote on it first.
Vote on the introduction.
Yeah.
So we do have, we do have. Second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now.
Now you can, now you can.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion do it up.
Steve McFerrin.
I'll second.
We have a second, second by Pam Volty. All those in favor?
Aye.
And all those opposed?
Okay, Kissel.
Aye.
Volty.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Vowens. Five ayes, no names.
We're going to, we do not have Mr. Ritz here, is that correct, Paul?
It is correct.
Okay, so let's get that one tonight, but we'll go back. We do have reports from superintendent John Rudhohler. John, just.
It'll take too long to buy.
It won't take long, it's wastewater. Our ports.
There's a lot of waste and oil.
Yes, there is.
The gas department, we added a couple services. And then we did have a leak in South Ridge Heights after we tracked it down. Dug it up, found out there's a sewer line right underneath it. Looked like it got caught with the back hole or something and kinked the pipe. Might have been twenty years ago, but it finally started leaking. So we did get that fixed. It wasn't reported when it was hit. And the crews did install a hundred and five smart points. We're pretty well done with our smart points. Boom Bill just picked up sixty-seven hundred dollars worth today. So we got them shipped out, added, changed out seventy-one meters. And we did use a vac machine to verify some gas sizes over Jasper. And we ended up finding a hidden valve under the pavement. So I know Jasper's gonna repave that road, so we had to get that repaired right away. We got the valve replaced. And then we got a sample of an invoice last year in January. We had to order some six-inch line stoppers. They would not give us the price when we ordered them. They said it'd be a year, but we had them for the railroad project on two thirty-one. Which by the way, the highway will be closed a week from Saturday. I don't think you're aware of that. The weekend and then down to One Lane, I think, till July, so it's gonna be a little busy there. But as you can see, the price I paid in two thousand nineteen for the valve, for the line stopper, we had to buy a couple in two thousand twenty-two. And we ordered before, and like I said, they wouldn't give us the price, a year to get them. So when we got the invoice, as you can see, there's no return on it. And you can see what the price is. So it went up that much. And they're the only manufacturer of that item. We can only get it from Grebner. So I need probably an official approval to purchase them, even though they're already purchased. But since it went over the ten thousand dollar mark, I think I just need official approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
I'd say that's just quite an increase.
Oh, yeah.
Electric, electric side, we set some temporary up at the airport for the Eclipse. And then we tore down, we had to set up a temporary transformer and then run some outlet boxes out of that. It worked out real good. We did install two services in the county road nine hundred. We took down the old copper wires, we run some new primary wire and a new neutral, the aluminum. Twenty-three hundred feet each run, so we got that done. And there was a pole at Cherry and First Street, it's a fifty-foot pole on the main line. Ended up being rotten at the bottom, so the guys had to spend a couple days getting that replaced. And two of our crew are doing CDL training. And brings to the truck they usually, they wanted to use, was gas department's nineteen ninety-six, two-ton pickup truck, or dump truck. It's a manual. I even trained on that when I did my CDL twenty-eight years ago. And I think about everybody used that truck. So they got it in, they were gonna wash it. The tires were real rusty, the rims were rusty. The cab was faded out. And you see what the bed looked like. So the guys took it, it had a couple rainy days coming. So they end up repainting the rims, sanding them down, repainting them. Took the oxidation off the cab, rewaxed it. And then they did sand down the bed and painted the bed black, so you can see what it looks like now. You know, so we did put a rebuild transmission in it. And we spent about two hundred dollars on, you know, all the wax and some paint. It's really not feasible. We figured to trade it in, get a new truck because back in the days, the city just only had back holes. And when you had to dig the holes out, they were a lot bigger than Jared can attest. Now we got many excavators, we got hydro vac machines. We don't have to dig very big holes. So mainly use just our one-ton pickup, so this pickup just, or the dump truck just gets used sparingly. So we figured it'd be worth the money to invest a little money in it. Spruce it up a little bit instead of trying to purchase a new one.
I say that thing should be in the parade.
Yeah, me too, I agree.
It's a, like I say, it's a ninety-six, so.
I can't believe these guys, knocked the transmission out of it, ninety-six.
A lot of gear grounded. CDL, a lot of, I think, a lot of people in the city use that truck to do CDL driving. And then the crew.
Good job on that.
Yeah, excellent job on that, thanks.
Yep, they did a really good job on it. So hopefully it'll last several more years.
Yeah.
Right now, the crews are working at nineteenth and North Amberian Street. We got a couple poles that are in bad shape on the corner. So we're gonna plant some temporary poles, run some temporary lines so we can de-energize that corner pole, take the lines down, change the pole out, put them lines back. So it's gonna take several days, so we've been working on that. We can try it at Pam's house.
Oh, down there, yeah.
I've been alerted of the outage.
Hopefully it won't last a couple days.
That's fine, that's fine.
Any questions? On the reports?
That's good. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Jerry. Hello, Jerry.
Yes, sir. Did you guys get my forty slide presentation?
Deep in the evening, Jerry.
Past all of our bedtimes. Nope, we're running. Run, I said all of our bedtimes, not just your guys' bedtimes. Run through this real fast. We did finish our spring hydrant flushing and valve exercising. We did with that, we found three hydrants with issues. One of them was out of order when we got on it. The other two tried to order parts for, they were early eighties, late seventies, American Darling hydrants. I can't get parts for them, so pulled them out of the ground. And we actually just installed one yesterday, one today, and then we've got one for tomorrow. We'll have all those replaced. We did have another failed copper service line at Northview Estates. We went in and we were able to pull a poly line all the way into the road across the meter pit. So it worked out in our favor there. And then we've got a transite water main that runs pretty much all the way down West Sunset Drive from Main Street to roughly Cody Bird's house down there, if you guys know where he lives. It's concrete, no way to trace it. We've came up short a couple times on where we thought it was. So we had a local contractor come in to do some bore work. So we took some time this past week to go out there with a hydro excavator and made very small impact on people's yards to locate that main all the way down through there and set some water main markers along the way, so we know where it's at from here on out. Other than that, we've been doing our large diameter water meter installations. They're quite a bit more difficult than a small residential meter. So some of our distribution guys will be going out with our meter tech and taking care of that as needed. Other than that, our filter plant is running as it should. And our metering system, other than installing those large water diameter, large diameter water meters, Corinthians Mobile Home Park, they've always been on a, one master meter for that whole trailer court there. I'm sure most of you were around whenever they did the Second Avenue Trailer Court. I think Brett Street was the same way. They took them off the master meters and the trailer court hired a licensed plumber to come in. They do all the work, all we do is provide them with a meter. They provide everything else for that project. So those twenty-eight mobile homes in that park are now on individual meters, all being billed to the customer versus to the landlord. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. So does that mean like the higher revenue even at the same district one month prior? You're making more money now than we did.
No, pretty much what that does is the, in that instance, the property owner. No, pretty much what that does is the, in that instance, the property owner owns the lot. The.
Renter.
Renter owns the trailer, so if they've got a leaky toilet, they just, you know, they can let it leak for months, and the landlord's going to pay for it, where now the actual homeowner is responsible for their water usage.
Which, which one was that? Which, which one was that?
Behind Wendy's.
That's what I thought, over here, down on the.
Twelfth Street, yep.
Yep, twelfth.
Twelthing Jackson.
Twelthing, we call it Carnehan.
Carnehan.
Yeah, never heard it called that before.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Pollock's going to come up, we have, Gary Ritz is not here, but he does have his final, we got his financials back and be able to submit his tax payment compliance form.
This is a housekeeping item that came before you last year and the year before that on the wag works. You've seen it before with some of the other tax payments. And what it does is it spells out what the agreements and what the promises were, the statement of benefits that was approved by the council back in February of twenty nineteen in order, in return for you granting a ten-year, one-hundred percent tax payment to the project on real property. This year, we've got the certified assessed values and the compliance, more compliance with statement of benefits, CF one form has been submitted. The petitioner, Gary Ritz, just got those in the last forty-eight hours and sent them to us. And that's just because that's as soon as he could get them from the county assessor. The project is in compliant, compliance with the original statement of benefits. Really, there hadn't been much deviation, and you wouldn't expect that because the investment was upfront. The only thing that has changed slightly is the anticipated wage rates have gone up for the two positions that are down there. And what's being asked of the common council tonight is that you either agree or disagree that the project is in compliance with its approved statement of benefits.
You need a motion, or what do you need?
Yeah.
We need a motion to, to be able to say that they are in compliance based upon CF one?
Just a motion, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Let's second it.
Those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Tom, I will get with you in the morning.
She should have went first.
Now we have transit director.
Wake her up.
April Lessiger.
It's going to be May before she gets up.
She does. April has, has worked with our clerk, been able to put together a financing package to be able to purchase a new vehicle.
Actually, I'm asking.
Approval to accept the grant.
Yeah, the council to allow me to apply for the grant for the transit. Every year I have to have approval for that.
Match, match will be paid for by, by insurance claim?
Fifty percent would be the city amount, that's approximately one hundred and seventy-six, one hundred and sixty-seven. That's what I came out with. The total amount is three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five. So went up a little bit from last year.
This is a fifty-three eleven?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the first one here.
So I'm just asking if it's okay, have approval to apply for the grant for the transit system.
So moved.
I agree.
You guys okay with that? After thirty-some years. I'm sleeping.
Do you need, whose signatures do you need in order to apply for?
I don't need any signatures yet. Everything has to be signed electronically this year, so I will have a lot of documents coming to you in the next week, because I have to have this in. But that's the reason why I couldn't wait till the next meeting, because I'd only had three days, and I know how busy you all are. And then I wanted to ask for, to be able to apply for a new transit van. I, I sent you guys this, and I highlighted the one that I would like to get, and it's exactly like what we have, but it's a, the one that we have right now is a two thousand and eight. It has a hundred thousand miles on it, and it started to use a lot of oil. And, you know, that's a problem if we're, and you can't get as many miles on the vehicles when you're in the city like that, seems like. So the total amount is a hundred and forty-two thousand for the vehicle, or no, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five for that vehicle. Eighty percent would be paid by federal dollars, their share would be a hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty. And then our share would be twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. But we do have a small amount of money left over from a vehicle that was, we have some insurance money left over, it's thirty-four hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's what we had left over from that vehicle that was wrecked, insurance money, so.
So that match is going to be about twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
Do we have that somewhere?
I guess tonight's not a good night to ask, huh?
It doesn't, it doesn't raise, doesn't raise anything.
It's a really small amount of money compared to what.
The money's there, but is the budget, do you have budget there for that?
For?
For the twenty-four?
Do we have to, do we have to?
Do we prove that in the budget this last year? Is that in your budget plan here?
Oh, it, it, it will be for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I wait, see, vehicles are really hard to come by. I'm not sure when I'll get it. Do you remember when the small, I ordered the mini bus, and it took three or four years? And the bigger buses are back, backordered as well. So I mean, I would, I would need the money in twenty twenty-five, but I probably, I might not get the vehicle for a couple of years, you know, so.
So you've got to be sure we put that on your budget line item.
Right, right. In the fall, whenever we do the budget.
So the motion would be to approve.
April, I have a question. I have a question for you, we just, what was your logic between, maybe you don't need a twelve-passenger van, but there's such a small difference in the price between the eight and the twelve? Is there, is there a reason why you would have chosen the eight passenger? Is it just not really needed with the twelve, or would?
We, we have a fairly new twelve. The drivers like driving the smaller one better. They love that seventy-five, that little vehicle. I don't know, it's easier for them, but I mean, yeah, I mean, I could go to the next one as well.
Do we ever have that kind of a passenger load difference, though?
Actually, that vehicle is used quite a bit. We take Beehive, and it's completely full when we take them, but, you know, that's the vehicle that we usually use. I guess if a couple more people moved in out there, it would be a problem, but then we have the twelve-passenger as well, so.
So you're saying you normally use the eight?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's actually ten, because it has a seat that folds up so that we can put a wheelchair in, and you can unhook the latch and let that other seat down, so it's actually.
Oh, it's eight plus two wheelchair?
Yeah.
My own.
Yeah, yeah. But that's why I picked that one, because I wanted it to be the same as what we already have.
Will you have to apply for a grant for this eighty percent?
Yeah, so our grant is due May seventeenth, and in order to get that vehicle, order that, or put in for that vehicle, I have to submit that with the grant, a request for that. And there's no guarantee they'll give it to us, but pretty sure they will.
Able twenty twenty-five, delivery twenty twenty-six, probably.
Maybe, yeah.
So the approval for the grant that we just did, or that just did?
To apply for it, yeah.
Was for the transit van?
No, the grant we just approved was operating funds.
Right, operating grant. Fifty-three.
Are you going to have one for the, for the, for the capital van, the capital?
For land.
Usually have a capital.
Yeah, yeah, I will whenever I, but I wanted to check and make sure it was okay for me to do that work. If, if it's not, then I won't, you know, if you guys don't agree to it, then I, I'm not going to waste my time.
Have we ever had an approval on this?
No, we're, that's what we're waiting for.
I'm so moved again.
You all are half asleep.
Normally, they'll need, they'll need, they want to know that the grants are applied for with the knowledge of the council and those that have fiscal responsibility over it, so that's what she's asking for right now, is that you're okay with her moving forward to transfer, you're not allocating any funds, and that could be done, could or may not be done in the following budget, year's budget.
Right.
Correct, okay. So the motion would be to allow you to apply for.
Move forward with it, yeah.
For the grant plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Counsel.
We have, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose?
They're all quiet.
Whenever you order these, they, you just order the E thirty, the three fifty, whatever, does it come in the diesel or gas, or do you have a choice?
It'd be gas.
They make, they.
I don't, I don't think they give us a choice.
They just show you, they just show up.
It's just like the one that we just got, the small van. We thought that we were getting something different, and then whenever, I mean, but we waited for three years, so we didn't complain when we got it. We ended up getting a Voyager, and I think we were supposed to get a Ford, or, I don't know, but yeah.
Do we have anything, Clark Treacher, Tom Biffle?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one thing, I think it involves Eric, Commonwealth Engineers.
Yes.
They have, they have requested an amendment to the engineering agreement for our waste work plant. Now usually, usually the Board of Public Works approves that. And we have, we have a meeting next Monday, but rather drag Eric back down that next Monday unless he wants to go.
Yeah, the two items that necessitate, the two big items that necessitate the amendment, one of those is the final design drawings, and when you saw the fifty-foot borings that were conducted there for the tank, there was extra work that was administered as part of that. And also, in order to incorporate bidders and meet the demands of bidders, but also supply chain right now, the project has gone from an eighteen to twenty-four month budget, I mean, time span. And so those are the big changes in it. All, all other items are consistent with what was previously negotiated with them in the past, with the old contract, but there will be an extra six months in there. Any costs, any costs with this were figured in, and they're in the line items for what you saw earlier from us, so they're already in, in that number. Is there a dollar amount on that? Is there a dollar amount on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we kind of broke up under three categories. We had a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy for additional final design, which was what the mayor was talking about, both the geotechnical work and then also some value engineering stuff we did during the bidding. We made some pretty significant changes at the, kind of working with the bidders at the time when they got their hands on the project, and they could see some things, some places we could make some adjustments. One notable thing was raising the tank up. We had it partially buried, and I think we saved over a million dollars in shoring by changing that elevation, raising it up, and then that kind of had a trickle effect with some other things, so.
Yeah, 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 it was, it was, it was pretty, pretty dramatic.
And then we had to relocate some sewer lines in order to accommodate that change as well. And then, back to your question, Tom, sorry, the construction phase service is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty. The inspection service is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five eighty, for a total of four hundred and sixty thousand even.
That brings, the original group amount was three million, two fifty-two. Adjusted gross amount, three million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred, originally.
Yeah, and, and we don't do, we generally don't do our agreements based on a percentage of construction costs. Some others, some others do, we see it in some other states, Kentucky and USDA contracts a lot of times do something like that. And I do kind of gauge that just to see where we are, and we're, we're well below where that number would be based on the percentage of construction cost, using the factors that Kentucky uses on RD type projects.
Yeah, it'd be a few hundred thousand higher, probably four, five hundred thousand higher based upon that percentage than normal, but normally you see in other areas.
That's great, because I think, something I could see, people would think that you would jack the price up on.
Right, right, once we see that, right. No, we, 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 we really, we, we do take the effort to go through, you know, person by person, how much manpower we think we're going to have on, on things, and, you know, we can engage based on what we've seen. Our level of effort's been on similar projects and things in the past, so. But we, we, like, like everyone else, you know, a couple of years ago, went through a pretty dramatic labor cost increase as well, so.
And you're, are you going to be the G C on this project, or?
No, so we, our construction involvement, we do have an inspector that's on site every day, that's observing everything, and then our engineers are on site periodically. We review all of the pay applications, any requests for information or changes or clarifications that construction, the contractors have, and then shot drawings, materials and things that come in, we review all of that, make sure it's consistent with what's in the specs, and then we assimilate and administer all that. There's a software program we use called Procore that has all of the, all the construction information records, and everything's on that, city's got the ability to access that as well.
We know they live in Spencer County, so.
Yeah.
We know they should respond.
He might have to talk a little slower, but. Yeah. Persecuted myself, I think.
So what do we? Any motion on this still?
Yeah, can we, motion to approve the amendment to the existing contract that was originally signed December twelve, twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion.
You got a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to leave you to originals. We know, I know before I left the office this afternoon that we had not signed the E verify statement. This one has that signed, that's the only change, so.
So, I did have one other question. So when this is sent out to bid, are you anticipating more than just one bidder, or you think that it's?
No, and so it has already been bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we just had the one. Yeah, we just had the one. And we actually had to, for the funding agencies, we had to provide justification for the recommendation with only having one, so we prepared a memo, I don't know, I can circulate it to you guys if you want, that has some of the due diligence work that we did through the bidding process to ensure that it was competitive and that we did appropriate outreach to try to get more bids, so.
And by the way, Reynolds is a good contractor, they're experienced, they've done projects like this in the past.
Yes.
Their, their record, I think the big thing that sold me is that change orders, they don't kill you with change orders.
No, no.
Well, I think too, there have been some around that have had issues with kind of, that it's kind of an ongoing, so it's, I don't know, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword sometimes, the cheapest one isn't always the best one, so that's, it's good that Reynolds is.
Yeah, and, and actually, they just built a project similar to yours in Paoli. We just actually issued final completion a couple of weeks ago, actually, and did a very good job. So very experienced with this particular type of plant and project, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's here for his support.
Well, we need one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
All those favor? All those opposed? All right.